Thank you all for coming. I call this meeting of the Millersville Borough Council to order as of 6 o'clock PM. As a reminder, this meeting is being livestreamed. I'd ask you all now please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment inside here.
The Pledge of Allegiance is certified of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all be seated. First item on the agenda, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes for the council meeting from December 10th, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Fellas and a second?
Aye.
Mary Ann. Any discussion needed on those minutes? Very well, in that case, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Who's sitting there?
Fair enough. Single abstention, Mary Ann. In that case, we will move on to the Civil Service Commission. Do we have somebody to speak on that behalf?
Public comment?
I'm sorry?
Public comment?
Oh, my apologies, we're going on to public comments. One moment, I'm sorry, I need to stand out. So at this time, the council will hear any comments, requests, or concerns from members of the public related to items on the agenda or other matters. You will have five minutes to speak. Please either come to the microphone up here or ask the microphone to be brought to you. Also, do give your name and a general address for the record. Would anybody like to address council at this time? All right, very well, then we will move on to Civil Service.
Good evening, my life on behalf of the Civil Service Commission, I'd like to request council's approval to post for two police officer positions. One is the, what's targeted, was previously anticipated, the second is an officer who recently resigned, so that will take the police in part of the backup to post for these two positions. So, the request is to post the advertisement for the job.
Very well, any questions on that? All right, seeing none, I will make a motion to approve the request by the Civil Service Commission to initiate the hiring process for two new police officers to fill recent vacancies.
So moved.
I'm looking for a second.
A second.
There we go, from the, and since there were no questions, I'll take the vote. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Very well, motion for unanimity, thank you sir. All right, item G on our agenda, approval to advertise ordinance to create new use entitled Community Resource Facility petition by the Law Community Partnerships. Ms. Towns, was it?
Yes, Towns.
Good, would you step up to the microphone over here for me?
Sure. All right, well, good evening, my name is Erica Towns, I'm going in for Riley Mosel, I think he was here at your last meeting. So the last time you all convened, you had requested that we make some changes to the proposed tax amendment. I believe we've made these changes, that the amendment has been previously circulated. I could summarize them or walk through them, I don't want to take up your time if that's not necessary, but...
A brief summary to get us started, and then if anybody has any questions.
Sure, so the council wanted us to clarify that the definition of Community Resource Facility Removed Medical Services and Counseling, that exclusion can be found in the italicized language on the first page. Solicitor wanted us to clarify the effective date on the ordinance, that can be found in section six on the last page of the proposed ordinance. Solicitor also wanted us to make some changes to the section references, so you'll see that in the redlined version. The Planning Commission asked that we limit the applicability only to existing buildings from between 10 and 12 square feet, that's found in section three, sub-paragraph 45C. There was also a request from the Planning Commission to permit the use only in the R2 and R1 zoning district and exclude it from the parking district, which you can find at the top of the second page. I think that's it.
Yes, do you?
Yeah, so that, we're just asking for approval for a public hearing.
Very well, any questions for Ms. Towns? Very well, in that case, I will make a motion to advertise the ordinance to create new use entitled Community Resource Facility as petition by Law Community Partnerships LLC and schedule for a public hearing. May I have a second?
Okay.
Very well, Mary Ann. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Very well, motion for unanimity?
Thank you.
See, the next thing on our agenda is approval to advertise the ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to establish the Green Energy Overlay District and resolution to amend the comprehensive plan petition by Student Lodging Incorporated.
Good evening, I'm Jeffrey Gears from Student Lodging Incorporated. Very similar to your last motion or your last action there, we're requesting your approval to approve the advertising, how the ordinance discussed or affirmed on and the comprehensive plan. Since we were last here, we met with the Planning Commission, and your solicitors worked with our solicitor, and we've worked out all the myths and the questions that were brought up. There was a specific question from this board about pollinator plants around the, around the way, and that's now, and so we're missing one. In fact, I'd prefer to you if you have anything else.
Yeah, they're all four changes that were requested were changed. This was approved out of Planning Commission, and is scheduled to be sent to LCPC tomorrow as required by the MPC, so if it's approved for advertising this evening, it would be scheduled for a public hearing in late February.
And where is the vote before LCPC has a chance to...
Yeah, you're just voting to send it for advertising.
Very good, very good. Any question for Mr. Gears, while we have him? All right, seeing none, and with the knowledge that this has been approved out of Planning, I am looking for a motion to advertise the ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to establish the Green Energy Overlay District and resolution to amend the comprehensive plan petition by Student Lodging Inc. and schedule for a public hearing.
So moved.
Very well, fellas and a second?
Second.
Second from Linda. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Very well, very good answer. All right, at this time, we'll move on to our committees. That's getting me anything, right? I have a last time, okay. Very good, in that case, it will be the Finance Advisory Committee, of which I am the chair, with the other members, please visually indicate by raising your hand.
There you go. Sorry.
Very good, so this should be a quick one, we're going to start with approval of the December financial reports. I will make the motion that we approve the December financial reports and authorize staff to satisfy ordinary and routine obligations incurred by the borough for this month. Do I have a second?
Second.
Very well, any discussion needed on that? The particular should have been in the drive for you. Very well, in that case, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Very good. We'll move on, I believe Rebecca, do you have something to discuss with us regarding the investment banking strategy?
Yes, I just wanted to provide an update based on the conversation that we had back in December. Provided in your backup document was a, what they call organizational chart, showing the breakout of the borough's funds and the banks that it's associated with, to help sort of provide that visual that we talked about last meeting. And so far, everything has gone relatively smoothly in terms of the transition that we've made, and I think we're already seeing the positive effects of being able to separate the accounts as we have. Happy to answer any questions about it, but I just wanted to give you all the update that all of that has been completed, and that that visual should help you understand it going forward.
Have there been any changes to the investment strategy since we learned on it back in December?
No, no changes.
No changes, okay, very good. Is, in fact, my other question, does anybody else on the committee have anything to add? Very well, and don't require a resolution or a motion of any variety? In that case, the Finance Advisory Committee stands adjourned. The Personnel Advisory Committee?
Hello, I'm Dylann. Everybody, all personnel, if you want to raise your hand, just to show everybody. Yeah, Marion, I don't think you're personnel, no.
I was at one time, I guess not.
So we have a consideration to reappoint Daniel Ziegler to the vacancy board with a term ending date of 12/31/25. Daniel's been doing this for a very long time, I don't know if anybody in the committee has any questions or concerns or anything. If not, we're just going to move on to make an emotion to accept the reappointment of Daniel Ziegler.
So moved.
There we go.
Second. And do you need a vote after that second?
Um...
You need a vote?
Yes, 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 so, all in favor of, let me go back here, all in favor of accepting the reappointment of Daniel Ziegler, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody rejecting? Say nay. Anybody abstaining? Okay, and we are going to do the same thing for, we're going to have a consideration of reappointment for Phil Westowski to the Blue Rock Regional Fire Commission with a term ending 12/31/26.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye, anybody opposed?
Aye.
I didn't hear any ayes, anybody in favor, say aye.
Very well.
Okay, consideration of reappointment of Lauren Dissinger to the Park Commission with a term ending of 12/31/27. Do I ever move?
Second.
Okay, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And, we have a discussion of the borough adoption of the provisions of Act 49 of 2024 regarding police military service buyback, and I'm going to refer to Ms. Rebecca.
Sure, so this request comes about from the Police Association, which is our collective bargaining unit of our police department. Act 49 is based on a new state law, well, Act 49 is a new state law that was passed in 2024 allowing this option for police departments. This would allow for officers to essentially buy pension credit, as they call it, for prior years of police service with a police department within the state of, or the wealth of Pennsylvania. Currently, the borough already has a military buyback program that would be very similar to this, but Act 49 allows for boroughs to take advantage of this program. Our understanding is that this program would help to recruit and retain more police officers, given the difficult situation that it is right now in hiring, and the draft agreement was in your backup as well as a short proposal from the Police Association, as well as the actual text from Act 49. I'm happy to answer any questions about it, and I believe Officer Anderson is here, in case you have any specific questions for the Police Department, but that is what we have in front of us.
Okay, and at this point, it's just a discussion, we're not doing anything further, so is there anybody that has any questions?
One question, one with regard to this and one related. Is this something that you've run by the solicitor, the, or solicitor for labor?
Yeah, so one of my staff recommendations this evening is that this agreement be put forward to our, our Labor Council, as well as the possibility of doing a short actuarial study with our pension administrator.
Excellent, excellent, and the related question, I do believe, this is negotiations here for the police system.
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, I think this is something we wanted to get moving on with the bringing on of two people, two people. Okay, so the next thing on our, we want to appoint a representative.
Hold on, so, so, sorry, just to do those two things that I just mentioned, we would want to make that motion out of committee.
Okay, that's why I asked.
It's on page five.
Okay, we will, we're looking for a motion to request review of the agreement by the borough's Labor Council, and to authorize the borough manager to request a study by the borough's pension administer, administrator to determine the cost of this benefit.
So moved.
Who wants it?
Which one, second?
Marion.
I'm still on the committee.
Yeah, Marion's not on the, yeah, so Linda, and then, do we have a second?
I'll say it, good.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unopposed?
It's only on the committee.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we're looking for someone to appoint a representative to the Appointments Committee of the Central Lancaster UCC Board of Appeals. It's an organization that hears challenges or requests for relief of the building code. We used to have, Mike Tuscan used to be on there, and we haven't had anybody representing us since, and I know Ms. Linda has raised her hand for that, so I would, I'd like, you still, still looking to do that? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion, unless anybody have any questions or anything like that in regards to, I'd like to make a motion to accept Linda and make her the Appointment Points Committee of the Central Lancaster UCC Board of Appeals. Do I have a, all motion?
I'll second.
Well, you can't second, we've got either, this one, this one, okay, you second. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, and that concludes personnel. We will move it on to Public Works.
See ya.
See ya.
See ya.
Yep, go ahead.
Shall I go? Good evening, I'm the Chair of Public Works and Public Welfare, and that committee consists of four of us, would you please raise your hands if you are on that committee? Okay, so everyone is present. The first thing that I would like to do then is call on our codes officer for the codes and zoning report, Rob.
Good evening, thank you. So for December, we issued eight permits and did eight residential inspections, we had 34 rental renewals and performed 48 inspections. So far in January, we have five permits issued, no inspections for rentals, we had 168 renewals and we performed 13 inspections. Are there any questions with the rest of the reports or anything?
Any questions? Thank you, Rob, very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is relating to false alarms, discussion of false alarm ordinance. I'd like to begin by saying that at the December 10th meeting, we again discussed false alarms, this is something we've been discussing for a while, but at that meeting, representatives from Blue Rock, Student Lodging, the high school, and MU were all here, and we made a request for them to get together and provide us with a comprehensive definition of what does and does not constitute a false alarm. And they have done that, and they have gotten back to us with that, and I have some copies here, my team already has it, and everybody down this way, I think, has one, so you don't need one. I think it's very good, and I think it's very comprehensive, and I want to thank them for their work and for getting together and doing this. Now, we had had an ordinance prepared by our solicitor some time ago, but now we are at a point where you're ready to move on, and we will be able to do that now that we have this information from these entities. And I think we need to consider using this in the ordinance, and I think that our solicitor will be able to guide us on exactly how we can incorporate it into the ordinance. So does anyone on the committee have any questions about this?
The only question I have is under Administration and Enforcement.
Oh, we're not there yet, I'm just doing this part.
You're just doing the fir, okay.
Okay, just doing this first page that they gave us, okay. Now we want to look at, committee wants to look at an ordinance that was prepared some time ago, and I, I know that some of you were able to get it online and some of you were not, but I gave everybody a copy this evening so that you would know what we were talking about. And I would like to include the definition, as I said, and let our solicitor determine how and where it should be incorporated into this ordinance, but I want to call your attention to a couple of things here that I think we need to look at. On page three, where it says, Administration and Enforcement, we're up to that now, we had discussed before that this is something that Blue Rock wishes the borough to do, to have this ordinance, and they're the ones that go out and do the calls, and they are therefore the ones who keep the records of where they have been and, you know, who they have gone to for a false alarm. So I wrote up just a paragraph or so here that I think Rebecca, we will pass on to the solicitor. The way that we feel, or I think it should change in the reading of that, is Administration and Enforcement of this chapter shall be functions of the borough. Borough Council by resolution may designate the Blue Rock Fire Company to administer and enforce this chapter. Blue Rock Fire Company must inform the borough office, specifically the codes officer, of all warnings. Blue Rock Fire Company must keep all the records and must inform the borough code officer when a citation is needed. These are sent by the codes officer. Now that, you know, I'm sure the solicitor may want to rewrite that, but that's generally the way we would like to have it done. Any comments?
That was my question, when we talked about this extensively, I thought we decided they, they should enforce this code, and I was just a little troubled by the word, they may designate the Blue Rock Fire Company.
That's why I took that out.
Oh, well, I'm, I'm reading from this paragraph here, and it says, shall be functions of the borough, Borough Council by resolution may designate the Blue Rock Fire. I think they should be the ones to administer and enforce it.
Okay, I think that's a very good idea, committee, what do you think Rebecca?
Can I just offer a few points of clarification, I think?
Yes.
So, because this is an ordinance and not the resolution, the, the reason why the language is, is very vague here is because changing an ordinance is much harder than setting a resolution. We want the ordinance to be somewhat broad in nature, giving council the ability to pass a resolution to indicate all of those things that you just talked about. So likely, the solicitor is going to come back and say, that's more perfect for a resolution, not for the ordinance itself, because we typically don't want to put into the ordinance the actual method of administration. And I think what, what has been talked about, and I think is probably going to be the clean and the legalist way to go about the administration of this, is for council to, if they, if you all approve this ordinance when it gets to that point, to by resolution, determine, set in there that Blue Rock Fire will be the one to obviously go to the, go to the calls, keep track of the calls, and then they're going, for this ordinance, they're going to be the ones then to issue their fee. The fee, if it is not paid within 30 days, then Blue Rock would let us know and say, this individual has not paid their, their fire alarm fee in their 30 days, therefore, now our quarter fourth officer will go out and issue a citation. So that, that would be the, the legal way for us to be able to, to do this.
Okay, so you're basically saying that we cannot say that specifically in the ordinance?
It wouldn't be best practice, because...
Okay, but that we could pass the ordinance without that and then have a resolution that says that Blue Rock has to do all of this, is that correct?
That's correct, okay.
I think that would make them happy, that's what we're, we're after, to satisfy them for this.
That's what we wanted to do, to be sure we are on the same, same page with everything. Okay, so violations and penalties, as written in the ordinance prepared by our solicitor, this section needs to also include the fines as submitted by the entities who prepared the definition. If you look at it on the backside of this paper that I gave you, on the backside, they have suggested what fees and fines should be, and I would recommend, when you speak with the solicitor, that she uses these, because there's nothing wrong with those, and if that's what the entities think it should be, then that's what it should be.
The only point I'll just make about that is sort of along the same lines, typically in the borough, we set fees by resolution to go into our fee schedule, we don't set fees by ordinance.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be included in here, it would be set by resolution.
Okay, because somewhere in here...
It does have the fine of $1,000, that has, that's more of the legal language that we have for if something goes to the district justice.
Okay.
In this case, will the, the, the fee that, that the fire department would then be able to issue would be set by resolution? We don't necessarily want it in the ordinance.
So first, we need to get a final ordinance, including all of this information that we have received, and based on what she has already prepared for us, changing the section on Administration Enforcement and so on, and then we need to pass two resolutions.
Likely one, we could do it in...
Do it in one, but a resolution on who's going to be designated and what the fines are. Okay. I just have one comment.
Sure.
Blue Rock Fire Company, I don't believe is the legal name, I'll have to look it up, it's Blue Rock Rescue, key, what is it, what's our official?
Blue Rock Fire Rescue.
Yeah. Blue Rock Fire Rescue.
Either way, for the ordinance itself, it would just say Fire Department.
Okay. So I would like, I would like to, I guess, have a vote out of my committee, if we feel with the information that we have before us now, if we can proceed to giving this to the solicitor, to include this and get a final ordinance.
So moved.
Is she at the same time going to do the resolution?
Yes, yeah, they'll do it all at once, so we'll have it as a package. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstaining? Okay, so moved, we're finally moving.
The better.
Okay, next on Public Works is the discussion of a draft ordinance to amend parking regulations on East Frederick Street. Basically, what that means is, we need to make some changes that will reflect what is actually happening there to begin with, and so it's really not a lot different. Is there anything you want to say about this?
Just one, or just two things I'll note, this is, as Councilwoman Gadsden put it, more of a cleanup of something that's already occurring, but it, but without it being in the ordinance is difficult to enforce. The other thing I'll note is that the version that I had originally sent to you all last week has changed slightly due to our street superintendent going out and actually being able to measure it and check, and so the version that you now see in, in the backup is the correct version, so there was just a slight change there in the, in the list, but otherwise, this is a relatively standard parking ordinance, that just essentially makes a change to reflect what's, what's currently going on.
Okay, do we need a motion for this? Uh, yes, yeah, okay, that's what I saw. A motion to have this ordinance reviewed by, that's the wrong one. Motion to have this ordinance reviewed by the solicitor and advertised for an upcoming public hearing out of committee. I'll make the motion, is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Okay, then we will move on to the next item under Public Works. Discussion of request for sewer connection at 58 South Duke Street. We received a letter, and it says, "I am formally requesting your permission to hook up my property located in Manor Township to the Millersville Borough Sewer System. The Borough Sewer System is located in front of our property, and half our property is in the borough, while the other half is in Manor. The barn that is on the Millersville portion of the property is already tied into your sewer, and we would like to tie into the same six-inch lateral that is already on the property." And it's signed by Joe DeVoy. Lash, do you have anything you would like to say about that?
Uh, I have no problem with that happening. This is very infrequent that this happens, but, uh, we've had, the last one we had was by 2015 on West, uh, Charlotte. Another resident from Manor Township just had an existing tail sewer out front. Basically, gets, uh, council approval, then they have to write a letter to the PUC that, uh, you know, the borough is allowing them to hook up, and they need to get, um, a letter from the PUC saying they won't honor their jurisdiction. And typically, that's not a problem, once it's approved, this sewer's closed by, and PUC recognizes that, and was like, yeah, so put another system in, of course. So, we've done this numerous times already. This is very infrequent, but I can probably count and differ properly that I've known.
Thank you.
You know what? It's not you. Another, another bill.
I would like to make a motion to approve the request for sewer connection at 58 South Duke Street. This is out of committee. Who would like to second?
I'll second.
One to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed. Abstentions? Then it is moved, and we will do that. And this concludes the Public Works and Public Welfare portion of our meeting.
You might be timing less.
Thanks. Looking at it.
All right, uh, we're going to, unfortunately, Mayor Rachel was held up, uh, at a city council meeting, so we will move straight into the manager's report.
Okay, thank you. The first item on the manager's report is the information to advertise our bill for 2025 street paving and approval of the resolution to add the escalator clause. As we do many summers in the borough, we have a paving schedule that we, uh, that we try to adhere to. This summer's paving schedule includes cottage apps for Avenue and Circle Road. Um, in order to get this process started, we need council approval to start the bidding process. When we put out our bid documents, asking for contractors to submit their bid to do the paving project, relatively standard from year to year. The resolution itself is to, um, add an escalator clause, which we have done in the past in 2021 and 2022. Due to the changing nature of the materials of paving, this allows for the bid documents to have in there an escalator clause that it can go up, that the, the bid can go up with the, with the changing price of materials. So, that is what we're looking for this evening, for a motion to advertise that. And we would need then a separate motion to approve the resolution.
Very well, then I'll make a motion to advertise the bid documents for the 2025 street paving project. Do I have a second?
Second.
No, a second from Linda. Any discussion required? Any questions for the borough manager on this? In that case, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? And the motion carries with unanimity.
And then we...
Do you want a motion to approve the resolution to add on an escalator clause to the 2025 street paving bid solicitation? Consider that my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Marion. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? In that case, that motion carries as well with unanimity.
Thank you. Um, the next item, uh, just wanted to offer an update for our Hometown here banner project. Um, applications are going to be open on January 31st. This is a first-come, first-served program. We will be able to put up 23 banners in our first year. Um, applications will be available both on our website and here in the office. Um, and we will let them close the applications as soon as we receive, um, those 23. But we're very excited, um, and we hope to have them all up on the lawn like we're here. Uh, the next item on the, oh, any question about that?
A quick question. Did we ever make it, like, any kind of rule that it has to be, the person had to have lived in the borough?
Or be a relative.
Or be a relative, so, okay.
Yeah, that's right. That's right, exactly. The next item is an update on our trash and recycling cart rollout, which has taken up a very significant portion of our time in the office over the last couple of weeks. As a, as a brief overview, um, as you probably, probably all did receive the new, um, carts for this year as part of the new contract with Penn Waste. Penn Waste being the contractor that we've used in the past years, but, um, their contract expired. We went out to bid, they were the low bidder, they received the contract with Millersville Borough for trash and recycling. There, we know that they are large toters. They're large. That, that is what it is. Um, it's the industry standard these days. Anybody who's, any, any borough township that is going to toter service, this is the size. However, um, Penn Waste does have a, a process that one can go through if they would like to request a smaller one. That information has all been in all of the handouts and flyers and on our website and everything we put out to residents, um, but that, that is still an option. What we know right now is that, um, according to, to Penn Waste, it, they're still working on getting out the new toters to all of their different customers in Lancaster County. Um, so it looks like we're likely going to have that, that trade-out process, where the people will be given a smaller one probably in February. So, we ask right now that you just be patient and wait as, as they work through the process. But if you want to get on that list, calling Penn Waste is the best way to do so, 'cause they have a list of folks who want to be traded out with. There also is still the ability for folks who, um, have a disability or have difficulty getting to the end of their driveway or to carry the toters. Um, we still have our front door, or back door, however they call it, service, where, um, where Penn Waste will come out, evaluate your property, and be able to determine if it makes sense for, for a, a Penn Waste contractor to actually go pick up the trash from, say, your front portion, pull it down. Um, so, that is an option for residents as well who have a disability or other reason why they have difficulties, um, taking their trash down to the curb. Otherwise, it's, it's been an interesting process that we're going through and, and us and many others. This has been a big year for, um, boroughs and townships to go to cart service. So, we are, we are not alone in this, and, um, and we know that it's tricky, and we know the change is hard, and we are taking, feels like hundreds of calls in the borough office every day about this. So, um, we ask for patience, and we ask that you let us know how we can help you the best. But sometimes, unfortunately, our answer is going to be, calling Penn Waste is going to be the best way to get on the right list and to get the right answers. Um, but we will do our best, we'll be doing our best here in the borough office. But I'd like to know if anybody had any questions about that.
So, the nature of the complaints, it sounds like, are primarily size of the toters, trying to get smaller ones, and getting assistance to get them out to the curb. Are there other complaints that we're hearing in large quantities that we maybe don't have a resolution for, that are a bit trickier, but are still common throughout the district?
That's probably the biggest one. Um, we will say that it's in everyone's best interest to, to use the toters as designed, and that if you're looking to keep or dispose of your old toters, there are ways to do so. If you want to dispose of it, um, putting a sign on your, on your trash can saying, "Please take the trash." Uh, we have had a few issues with that, but Penn Waste has assured us that going forward, they will be collecting those if it has a sign on it. If you're looking to keep it, then by all means, keep your old one. You're welcome to do so, just don't, don't put it out, so that it, it's not... They will not take trash out of it anymore. If you put out your personal can, that trash will not get taken. Um, I think those are really the big conversations that we had, big issues.
I've seen some people that had a bag next to it, that they didn't take any of the garbage then. So, I have seen that. I'm surprised that wasn't something that you were, you were going to bring up.
Yeah, we, we have had a little, unfortunately, just as it was before, just as it was in all the years prior. Um, if you have an additional bag outside of the toter cart, you have to come in and get a yellow tag for that.
I've had, especially with, like, Christmas waste and so forth, had to put out multiple bags alongside my toter and two, three with tags on them. It, it hasn't been an issue for me. So, I think it's really just a matter of making sure that people never come in and get their tags to put out alongside those toters.
Any other questions about that?
All right.
Okay. Moving on, then. Um, the next three items, we'll sort of talk about together, but they are, um, unique in them, in and of themselves. But these three requests are approvals for us to move forward with, um, agreements, quotes, orders for this new software that we've been talking about as part of the budget process. As we talked about with this year's budget, the, one of the big goals for this year is an update to the technology that we use here in the borough. Some of it by force, some of it by choice. Unfortunately, due to, uh, one, uh, the, the company that we use for our utility billing, our permitting land management system, um, they have been purchased by another company, and they will be phasing out the current system that we have. So, some of it, like I said, some of it by force, um, that we're, we're making these changes. Um, we've done a lot of shopping around, so to speak, trying to look for what's going to be the best for what the borough needs. What we've landed on is, um, looking at, for payroll software, a company called PrimePoint. That's local to the Pennsylvania University area and are very familiar with working with governments of all sizes, but especially, especially small governments with collective bargaining units. Um, we're very excited about that opportunity. We're looking at a system called, um, Uni-Billing for our utility billing software. Um, that is used by a number of other Lancaster County municipalities who's had good success with it. So, we'd be part of a consortium with them. The Edmunds GovTech, um, is for, would be for permitting and for our accounting software. This one is definitely going to be the biggest hurdle for us in terms of, there's a lot of data that would have to be transferred. But we are excited about the opportunities that this company provides in terms of functionality, bringing us into the 21st century when it comes to the way that we do cer- certain things like permitting and the way we do our general ledger and things like that. So, we're, we're very excited about all the, the opportunities here in front of us. Um, all of these items have been, were accounted for in the budget, almost exclusively in the equipment repair and service contracts, uh, object code, um, in the general fund. And then the things like utility billing gets split between sewer and solid waste funds. Um, we have been preparing for this since, uh, last fall during the budget process in terms of getting quotes and, and working this through. So, that's what we'd like to present this evening, um, is hopefully a motion to approve all of these items. And breaking pens.
Our pen just...
All right, so we will, uh, if there are any questions about any of those three things, please ask from now, otherwise, it's going to be three rapid-fire motions kind of right in a row here. Does anybody have questions? I know we discussed some of this, we were talking about budgeting. But this has already gone through the, uh, the process. These have been decided on as our best options. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about these three individual items? All right, I am not seeing any. So, first, I will start with a motion to approve the proposal with PrimePoint LLC to provide payroll and timekeeping services and software for the borough. Do I have a second? Very well, that was Marion. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Then the motion carries with unanimity. Next, I am proposing a motion to approve the agreement with Nuuna Billing to provide utility billing software and support to the borough. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Phyllis. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Very well, motion carries. Finally, I am proposing a motion to approve the sales order with Edmunds GovTech Incorporated to provide permitting and accounting software and support to the borough. All those in, oh, I'm sorry, you may have a second.
Second.
Very well. And all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Very well.
Thank you very much. We, we appreciate it. We will... It, it, it will be quite the process this year of making these changes, but we're excited about it. And I think it will, it, it, yes, it's going to be an uphill battle, but, um, but we are excited for the opportunities that it brings for our residents in terms of greater efficiency for everything that we do. Um, and the last item, we actually can, um, sort of move off of the agenda. Uh, in discussion late this afternoon with the mayor, we determined that actually we can, um, do this by a simple signature of the mayor. So, that's, we can do that. So, we can stick that item out. We will take care of that separately. Otherwise, that's all I have for the, for the management.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. Uh, I have nothing in particular for the process report. I generally reserve this time to circle back on, uh, requests and comments from the public. We haven't had a whole lot, uh, since November, December. So, we will move straight into our second round of citizen requests or concerns. Once again, uh, will there anything that you have to say? If you do, if you come up to the microphone or ask that the microphone be brought to you. You will be limited to five minutes. It can be items from the agenda, other items, whatever you like. Just remember to give us your name and a general address for the record. Would anybody at this time like to address council?
Stephanie Hirsch on Blue Rock Road. Just had a question. I was not exactly up on the green energy overlay. If you could tell me where that is?
So, we're looking to develop a, well, a creative solar array on the farm toward the side of that one. It's sort of between the, sort of the high school and the church. There's two more buildings back there that were, sit back in the back of the property.
I remember that being the last Marshall. So, that's what would be the change, the comprehensive frame, I don't know if that happens, so. An option or... Okay.
Anybody else like to address councils?
Good evening, council. Just a quick question regarding the Penn Waste. Since the borough is starting to see climate weather, what is Penn Waste's SOP, or should the borough incur like a blizzard or anything? And they can't pick up on Monday, they can't pick up Tuesday. Would they come out Wednesday, or would they have to push it off to another day?
I appreciate that. Could I bring up your source? I know you've talked to us before, I just had trouble putting the name to the face. Would you like to handle this one?
Sure. So, yes, typically, if, if we were to say have a blizzard or something like that, typically, we would be closing, usually, so with Penn Waste. So, typically, that their SOP is that they schedule it the soonest date that they can then reschedule us. So, if it's a Monday and we're good Tuesday, they can come Tuesday. Uh, if it's, if it gets pushed all the way through the week, which doesn't really affect us very much, but for other customers who have, um, like a Friday pickup, they might get pushed to Monday. But typically, for us, if it's going to get pushed, it's going to be the other Tuesday.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to address council? Very well, um, in that case, at this time, uh, we will entertain a motion to go into executive session concerning litigation regarding enforcement of borough ordinance. Could I have a second for that, please?
Second.
Very good. I'm Phyllis. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Very good. Uh, if the public would like to remain until council exits, uh, executive session, we ask that you exit the room and remain in the lobby until we reconvene. Uh, the streaming of this meeting will continue to run. I don't believe we have any other agenda items to cover once we get out of executive session. So, please feel free if you'd like to depart. You're more than welcome to. I encourage you to, but we will be coming back for adjournments afterwards.
I mean this in no offense, but, just now.
You want to do that?
I'll do that. I'll do that because...
That's why I'm trying to give you some freedom of speech.
So with that, yes, I'm...
I'm thinking creatively.
You're good. I like to take Penn Waste's and stuff.
Do you have charge of Penn Waste? Say you're lucky, man. You got one trouble.
Well, they knocked down lawyers.
Hurt totally too, hurt totally on the street. Did you hurt?
Oh, did he call? Oh, yeah, he did. You're right.
Anyhow, we, we, it started with a blackjack.
I appreciate that.
And I think we lost everyone. What a surprise.
Is it gonna let everybody back?
Oh, yeah.
Adhere.
I gotta go over there and see if I can find a piece of my pen.
I haven't left yet. I have to look to adjourn and stuff.
I know. I put my coat on. I'm pretty ready. And I just went to...
Over that counter and sprint to the door.
Otherwise...
That's not a big deal.
They're that big.
Yeah, I was thinking about that line down Manor Avenue the other day. I'm sure people are gonna just holler about these yellow things all over the street, but it's just bad weather. Give us a break.
All right, I'm guessing people aren't coming back in, so, yeah. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Second for Marion. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
In that case, I call this meeting adjourned as of...
Seven ten.
Seven eleven PM.